Motion made by Steve.
As amended.
Motion by Steve Welch.
I'll second.
Second from Matt Sherland. All in favor, roll call. Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim DiAbrio.
Aye, Matt Sherland.
Okay, um, we have no non-publics. Boards and committees. Uh, I was at the planning board meeting last Wednesday. And we had a nice, the highlight of for my, we had a meeting with Shea Concrete to finish up their plans for a small addition they're doing. For where they're gonna put the new fire, um, fire cistern in for the, the building. It's private. But the town does have permission to use it in case of emergency, but it is not town responsibility. It's due to the building and because it's a manufacturing building, they have to have it by state code. But there'll be an extra cistern right there on Route four if we ever needed it for fire. Um, just went over the regular details and they got the conditional approval. They're just waiting on the state to sign off for their subject and stuff, so.
Big cistern was it?
Uh, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
Uh, it's built for the size of what they're, they need to support their building. Uh, then one of the heated conversations we have, which you guys might like to know for whoever's gonna sit on next year, wasn't heated, but it was a, a good discussion, it looks like. Was on ADUs. You know what an ADU is? Auxiliary drilling, doiling unit that you have. Uh, right now, the, our zoning says that you can, it's seven hundred forty, I think, square feet, seven hundred fifty square feet. Uh, and usually is attached to your house. Was petitioned there, well, the conversation was about having non-attached ADUs. You know, some people were saying because of the fact of the housing crisis that we're in, you know how ADUs are there. Uh, I spoke against it. And again, I spoke as a member of the board, not as a member of the select board, just as a, as a regular, because you guys could all have your own opinion on it when it comes, but. Opening it up to having other outside, like having a separate house built on your property and still going under the same, you know, regular two-acre lots, but being able to. Could possibly open it up to developers down the road to be putting ADUs out back and, you know, build your house in this. You know, the whole idea of the ADU in my mind was always for the fact that you're building that for that a family member is gonna be living with you. You know, and that's where some of the ideas are, but in the long run of the whole spectrum, you have to look at what it's gonna be twenty years down the road. Now, somebody could build an ADU and say it's for their family member, but then five years later, it's a rental property. Now, do we want that or not? That's how I looked at the, the picture of it. If you don't have something attached to your house. My mind, it's different if something's attached to your house and you have somebody living there. It's different than having a separate building where somebody's living. You know, for how, how that dynamic works. So I'm not a fan of, but again, it was this discussion in that it could, because if it does change, it's gonna have to be a Warren article. It's changed from the planning board. And then it's gonna obviously come in front of us before it actually makes the Warren article. Uh, but back in the day, the, the zoning ordinance used to be an ADU to only four hundred and fifty feet or four hundred was small. So they actually did increase it quite a bit for it. So I'm just looking more of as, I don't think it's, if you wanna put an addition on, you want, and I don't think there's a cost savings. Anybody that's gonna build a, a seven hundred fifty or square foot thing. The cost of foundation to run the electrical, run everything on it, I don't see how anybody's saving any money. It's more, I think, gonna be the benefit for the, whoever puts it in as a long-run rental unit. And that's where we become, who's going in that rental unit? Is it two kids and a mother, two kids and a father, or whatever? Now, is that, you know, it's not tax the same, it's not as a regular residential house, so. If you watch the minutes, this is a good discussion on what.
True.
And then we were talking about steep slopes, uh, and what to do about steep slopes. One of the concerns with steep slope ordinance was developer comes in. And so we're gonna use the instance of the new development that's going in on, uh, one fifty-six on the Raymond Nottingham line. He has to excavate a good portion of that hill, uh, so literally in order to make the road the grade that it needs to be. So, one of the discussions on that was whether we're, we need, we, in the future, are we gonna allow it by changing the steep slope ordinance? Friend, we have to have twenty-five percent grade, you know, and there's different things, but that's a lot of excavation and a lot of, because then when they take it out, they're gonna make it X amount of feet wide, so it's a, it's a dramatic change to the landscape. Again, that's one of those who's open for discussion, whether it's, if you think it's right or not, you can look more into it. Again, I'm not a fan of having that. It's somebody's land, let them do what they want with it and how they do it. I know we're trying to protect things, but we start putting restrictions on all these people with properties and. How are we doing the people with the property owners, you know, a justice? If we have to say, hey, guess what? Good thing you own it, but now you can't do anything with it. Or you're limited. Or you thought you could do something, but now as the more restrictions we put on it, we limit those people for what they can do with their property. Is that right?
So does erosion come into the factor?
Oh, they have it all set up where you have to have, you know, well-end areas, you have to run off properly, you have to have drainage pools, you have, I mean, I think our ordinance, how when we do a subdivision, if you go look at it. There's a lot that goes into it for, just on how you mitigate the water, how you get things to go and all that, so. I just thought it was another thing that makes, even now, anybody that comes for a subdivision, they probably come in ten times, eight times at least. It's like a year process or longer to get a subdivision approved, because there's so much detail that goes into it, so. So it's a good, um.
Good watch.
Oh, we were here till, uh, yeah, we, it wasn't no quick eight o'clock meeting, that's for sure, so. But anybody that sits on that next year, there's a lot of different changes and stuff that people, you know, going on. My, my big thing was that when I was on the zoning board twenty years ago, the zoning board was only maybe twenty-five pages. Now it's sixty. So we've put a lot of restrictions over the years, some good, some I don't agree with, but over the years on, on ways to protect Nottingham, so. I just don't think adding more is gonna help, but that's my opinion. So, if that comes up front, it'll be a board question to answer. You guys can all research and do your thing on it. So that was my play anymore. Then I went to the recycling center on Saturday and.
How was your visit?
Uh, it was good. Uh, inside was kinda clean. There's a couple of concerns and things out there, but then we have a, where we got rid of the shanty shed, whatever the fancy name you wanna call it from the old days. Now there's a, now there's a, a white table there, which was loaded with stuff.
Really?
Yeah. So I was told that if somebody goes today, that area would be completely cleared and it'd be fresh to go. There'd be nothing there. Obviously, I didn't get a chance to go look at it today, but what we don't want and what we had was not to have that. We voted not to have the shanty shed. So to have it, something like it, even though it's not covered, it's not, it's just more mess, in my opinion.
It doesn't get removed by the end of the day, it gets discarded.
But, yeah, that's what they're.
They're supposed to be doing. Let's hope that, if we go there, I wanna see if it's, I'd like to see somebody, you know, that's there today saying that, hey, yes, it was all cleaned up and it's all gone. Because again, we're not, we said that the reason why we got rid of the shanty shed was because of the mess that was going there. No one was taking care of it and it got there. Even I understand there's some items in there that could have been valuable, but we also allow people now to go picking through the, the thing anyways. So I know we're making it a little more convenient having it there, but you can literally reach into the dumpster, because we passed that too. Remember, we had that there too, so it's not like we're not allowing people to take things out. I mean, we're trying to keep it clean, organized, uh, to a way, so I don't see that as being beneficial.
My concern would be the amount of time that it takes them, like if.
It's another thing.
Do they set it up on Thursday and not take it down till?
I think these people just start piling stuff.
That's what I'm saying, so it's not the end of each day that they take care of, it's at the end of the day on Saturday.
No, on Monday.
How long does it take them to?
No, on Monday they do it.
Oh, they do it on Monday?
Supposedly. Again, I'm not there, but I'm just saying though, I didn't think it was appropriate since we said we didn't want that shed there, the reason why we got rid of that shed. And the fact that now we allow people to go in the dumpster and pick stuff out of there. What's the purpose of this there? But that's just me, not being negative, but that's just me saying.
Like a lot of people, the issue with the other shed was that it kept, people would be like, oh, somebody could probably use this can of paint that I really can't get rid of. And they would put in basically hazardous waste or things that were, or would have cost them to get rid of. Be like, oh, here's a DVD player, I'm sure it works, but if they were to put it in the electronic bin, it's supposed to cost them five or ten dollars. So that, that was skirting what people were supposed to be doing. I think the other stuff, it kinda gets set in front and then people kinda rummage it and then get thrown.
There was a fake Christmas tree sitting in there.
Christmas is coming.
I need one now. Again, what's the condition if somebody's getting rid of it? I mean, is it something that somebody else is gonna, I mean.
Yeah.
They could still grab it if they wanted to out of the things, but just, that was just my take on it there. The inside of the facility looked clean, um, and the outside was, besides that area there, when I did a quick walk around.
The guys were helpful.
The guys were great, very talkative, nice, uh, and keeping up with all the bags were good inside, so.
Good.
Yeah. Still need to fix that ramp, but we'll get there later, so. And anybody else for another board?
Um, I spoke with, uh, the rec department and, uh, she's looking to put together a committee, like we had talked about, a little bit different. Um, she's emailing out some interested parties, but basically looking to create a Friends of Rec nonprofit. Um, not part of the rec, but Friends of the Rec, like the Friends of the Library, where they can fundraise for different objectives and, uh, potentially work with the rec on, you know. Whether it be improvements at Marston or improvements around here, wherever it might be, um, programming projects and sort of get their support and buy-in. Um, so, I'm talking to Courtney, instead of having a separate committee as well, like an advisory committee, she'd like to start with the Friends of the Rec, see how that goes for, you know, six months to a year, and then maybe create another committee if that makes sense. Or if that's, this committee can act as that advisory committee, then kinda stick with that. The election went extremely well last week.
Oh, yeah, that was fun.
Yep. Good time as always. We had almost fourteen hundred people show up for primary.
Yeah.
It was not fun, but it wasn't.
We were out of there by ten o'clock. That was, that was good.
Yeah.
It was good.
Yeah, thank you to all the people that showed up, volunteered and helped out for the day. It was a long day.
We got a great community.
Yep, moderator and supervisor was checklist, did a fantastic job running an election once again. See you on November fifth.
Yes. Another fun day.
Mm-hmm.
We won't be out of there at ten o'clock.
No, we will not.
One more thing about, since we're talking about, since I said, uh, Ellen, for your notes, um, shirts for the guys?
For the recycling center?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, and then they were asking about signs for the dumpsters outside?
Correct. So we're utilizing the New Hampshire, the Beautiful Points Program. We get sixty points per fiscal year, which ends October thirty-first. So we're actually looking into getting a column, the sandwich or A-frame style, um, signage, so only one for each dumpster for Pokie Way C and D, paper, um, scrap metal. So I think we can purchase two of them before they close in fiscal year, October thirty-first, and then get another sixty points, so that we'll be able to, um, give us the ability to put the signage up. And that way, if the containers get swapped, or we have to move them for snow, or they forget to take the signage off the containers before they get hauled out, we can just.
Well, as they were saying, you know, about having like little sawhorses out front, which they don't have to be, they don't get attached to the, the next dumpster.
So this will look a little bit nicer than a sawhorse. It's actually the A-frame style and it has a, um, I think it's a twenty-four by thirty-six, um, plastic material, like, um, not like corrugated cardboard, but like, uh, the classic side of it. Something that will be weatherproof and again, we can move it around if we need to.
And the shirts?
And the shirts, we're working with the uniform company. We're having challenges there. We have a contract. Um, right now, the highway department, uniforms and recycling center uniforms are all through there, but we're having issues with supply and getting appropriate contacts, so we're working on that. Um, Alan, I think, is using old uniforms from when we used to purchase them, and then we just have to get the new guys on board with a new set. And I say new, but they're not new. Art has the uniform company. Alan's using old purchased uniforms and Roger doesn't have any at all.
So we can't just buy them for them?
Well, we've been back and forth. Uh, what we ended up doing was, um, the highway department would actually prefer that we go with a uniform service, because then they're not putting greasy clothes through their personal washers.
Their launders.
So that, we're utilizing the, the uniform service and we're extending that off to the recycling center staff as well, because again.
When's the contract then for?
Uh, what we ended up doing was we had like a mop head maintenance company when we had an in-house cleaner, and now we've got with a contracted company. We don't need that anymore, so we converted the mop head contract over to a uniform contract. So I just have to check the inspiration of that. We might be moving companies, because we're not satisfied.
There's a lot of them out there.
Yeah.
If I'm asking about it, we shouldn't be satisfied. This brought to my attention that I don't think that's good, so, you know? But it is a nice thing to have, nice, appropriate for the guys that are working with us down.
Yeah, consistency.
Something where they can be identified as.
And it's just nice. So I think that's something, you know, let's make sure we get that taken care of, so. Uh, anything else from? No budget?
Uh, budget, we have our next meeting in.
October third?
October, yeah, in October. We had a quick thirty-five minute meeting just to sort of start talking about procedures and some, setting up some guidelines and parameters for the committee and. Um, what the chair's role will be and all of that, so we're gonna hopefully get that approved in the next two meetings.
And that went really well.
It did go very well. The conversation was productive. We have sample policies from a couple of other towns that the committee's going to pull together pieces that we all like. And then again, hopefully, we're able to vote on it at one of the next two meetings.
And for CIP, have you ever planned a word with Skip on?
Yes. Yeah, he'll be the new member, and they get again on September thirtieth.
So coming up.
Correct. I'll make sure he gets all the information on him.
Perfect. All right, we're done. Moving on to town administrator's report.
And if you wouldn't mind, instead of, um.
Do you want to?
Do you wanna move forward to address Dale and Alan while they're here?
Absolutely.
Perfect.
We will, uh, put off the town administrator's report till after our general business meetings, um, and appointments. And Dale, you wanna come up first, talk about building permits and fees? Thank you, Dale, for coming in.
Thank you for having me here. Reached out and asked me to comment and answer some questions that you guys may have.
Perfect.
It's my understanding that you are exploring the options of expanding upon our fees. Is that?
Yeah, obviously, we wanna make sure that we're in line with, um, other towns. Uh, we don't wanna be undercharging. I mean, we charge things differently. For somebody builds a house, we charge for bait as a whole square footage, right, instead of doing small individual fees? Okay, I think we might have talked about this in one of the last ones, right? And then there was a thing that came up about, what's in it, a pool?
Somewhere.
A solar, that's what, sorry, it was something in the backyard.
Rooftop versus in-ground and why there was a difference and why one's more than the other.
So I will, and I say this all the time with the planning board, I'll enforce whatever rules you want. Um, if you're asking my opinion, though.
Well, you see it every single day compared to us.
Of course, we're asking your opinion. That's why you're here.
That's, I, I think that we are adequate where we are. We may be a tiny bit lower than some of the towns, um, but I believe in, in general, this is in the building department. We're not in business to make money. That is not what our goal is, the objective. Um, do you have extra cash? Sure, it helps, but that is not the purpose. You don't want a conflict of interest there. What we want is the department to be self-sufficient and not cost the taxpayers anything. That's the general view, is make sure that we are not putting anything on everybody, the new people coming in, whatever they're doing, or not new people, but people that are increasing should be responsible for it. So I did a little bit of research and, just to start off with before we get into it, in two thousand twenty-one, we brought in seventy thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars. And it costs thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-five to run the department. We made about thirty thousand dollars already. Of course, that was during COVID and everybody was going crazy. Decided to settle down a little bit. In twenty-two, our permit fees were sixty-nine thousand zero sixty-five. And it costs forty-five nine to run the department. So we still made over twenty-two thousand dollars profit. In twenty-three, it was sixty-nine, one hundred eighty-three again, and it cost fifty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars. So even though it's leveling out, last year, we still made a fifteen thousand dollar profit. Um, we don't spend a lot of money. I spend.
Probably on practice yet for the same.
Right. We gotta buy code books this year, because every time the codes come up, a couple grand.
That's not including salaries paying out, is it?
Yes. That's everything.
Okay.
The majority of that is paid me. That is the salary.
Okay.
Salary and mileage for vehicles. That's the majority of what we're doing. I spend very, very little. We spend code books, um, we're gonna be testing Marston, that's a couple hundred bucks. It's literally almost nothing that my department spends money on. Um, so we are still making money and we will again next year. It's my opinion that that's not really our goal, and obviously you don't wanna cut it so close that you go into the bread. We don't wanna do that. You know, if you make ten, fifteen thousand or whatever it is, you know, it goes to surplus or however, but that's not our objective, to make money. Um, I don't really see a reason to raise fees just on that alone. To specifically talk about fees, yes, other towns, uh, the previous town I worked in, they had four or five different fee schedules. If you were doing this, it costs sixty cents. If you were doing this, it costs seventy cents. If you're doing this, it costs eighty cents per square foot. We were very simple, with thirty cents a square foot for new homes, forty for remodels. It's very simple, it's very straightforward, there's, you know, you tell it, but we charge for everything. So, the previous town I worked for, it was just living space. When we do it, we're charging for the basement. We're charging, if the attic, if it's like crawl space, no, but if it's a walk-in attic, storage, we charge for that. We charge for decks, patios. So it kind of more or less works out equal. We might still be a little bit lower than some of the towns around, let's not acknowledge that, but it works out equal. Where you're making up, though, is on the small projects, not the big houses. We're still charging thirty cents a square foot. So it's divided amongst everybody equally. If you're just putting in, not like, um, let's say you're building a barn, but it's not a big major project, we're charging thirty cents a square foot. And you're getting that money anyways, so it's very, very close. Obviously, the numbers show that we are bringing in more money than we actually spend. I don't see a reason to increase it. The one area I did suggest so was solar. Um, what we're doing is, we are paying for the services, like you're paying for me to go out there and inspect. I don't climb on roofs and for rooftops and things like that. We don't do building permits for it right now. We do for ground mounts, because it's taking up space and we're looking at setbacks and we're looking at wetlands and everything else. So what I would like to see is a, because, because we don't do building permits for solar, we only do electrical. I would kinda like to see a all-encompassed fee, regardless of how big it is. For example, like, um, if it, what I propose would be, if it is a rooftop, we charge seventy-five dollars. And if it's ground, we charge a hundred dollars. Right now, we're only charging fifty. So I am proposing that they do pay something. Again, we're not trying to make tons of money here, but the time it takes me to go out there and inspect it, they should pay for that. That's the one area that I think that we do need to increase, um.
So you're not inspecting rooftops?
I do not inspect rooftops. What I will do though, what I do do though, is there's a little bit of paperwork side, because we're looking at the structure. If you've got a two-hundred-year-old barn and you wanna throw a roof, uh, you know, solar on it, we have to make sure that it can handle that. There are times that I will go inside the attic to make sure that the roof can support it that way, but I'm actually not climbing on any roofs. I don't put a ladder up there and we, we don't do that. Almost nobody does. I don't know anybody that actually does do that.
So what would the fee cover then, if there's no cost?
There is a little cost. Like I said, when the plans come in, there's still plan to review on these. Right now, you're just doing electrical bits. Somebody comes in, wants to put a, a light bulb, then we charge them fifty dollars. We're charging the same thing for solar. But when a solar comes in, there is paperwork. I have to look at setbacks. Um, I'm looking to make sure that it is appropriate. We're looking at licenses. So there's administrative costs in there that I would like to see that we're paying a little bit more on, or not we, that we're charging a little bit more on, to cover the time that's doing that. And the occasional one, these old barns and stuff like that, um, doesn't happen often, but if it's anything potential, we could be up in the attic, spending time up in there, making sure that it's structurally safe. And you know that the loads, the load transfers are appropriate.
Would I be also correct in saying this, though, that because of your schedule here with the town and past building inspectors that were here more often times, that even though we're showing a, a decent profit. If your position would be changed, let's say you leave us, we have to hire somebody else, we might not be as fortunate to see that much profit as we're seeing today on the fee schedule that we have. Potentially.
Well, I think his time would be, the time he's putting in versus the time a new person should be very similar.
I mean, I'm.
Should be. If you're suggesting, if it stays part-time, it's manageable.
Exactly.
If you're suggesting a full-time, I think at that point, you would need to start over and look at everything, um.
Well, we.
I don't believe that there's enough work here to justify a full-time building inspector.
Absolutely, but I'm just, we see the money-wise, where we used to have a full-time basically building inspector, where the fee schedule, it's nice, we're very, we're very lucky to have you, Dale. So, I don't think you're just making twenty thousand dollars or making a profit off that. Is that extreme?
He's not here, but Mr. Deckard had a question at the last meeting as to why it is more expensive for renovation versus new build. It's thirty cents for a new build, forty cents for renovation of, of your existing.
Well, that was prior to me, but if, looking at it, it actually takes more work for a building inspector for a renovation than starting from scratch. I can go in and I'm gonna do a new house, I'll probably do eight, nine, ten inspections. But you can go in all at once and it's possible to do a framing, electrical, plumbing inspection at once. When you get into renovations, you might be going out there before a hammer's even swung and looking around, because the homeowner is scared and they wanna know this of what's gonna be accepted in the contractor. So you're looking at that, and then when you open up the walls, there's a lot more potential for me to go back more times on renovation than, and there's potential more for failure. When I say failure, like I'm gonna fail something, doesn't mean they did it terribly wrong, but you look at it and you say, no, this isn't gonna fly, you know, for whatever reason, now you gotta come out again. If it's a new house, the guy's building it, he knows what he's doing, contractors or she knows what she's doing, they come out, they build it, and you go through the system fairly easy. They're not saying that happens. There'll be a lot more inspections on renovation than there would be on, it almost seems backwards, but that's, that's the reality. You'll spend more time on a renovation than you will on a new building.
I think his other question too is for commercial, why it was one flat rate for new and renovated for commercial. He was just wondering like why, and this part is broken up and down here, it's just one flat rate for commercial.
I can't answer that. I don't, but we're charging double for.
Commercial.
Commercial. Um, would you charge more than double? I don't like, I, I can't answer that. That's the way it's.
These are just questions he had that I remember him asking and why one area was different over the other.
I think the inspection, like, so let's say you were remodeling this room and we charge thirty cents a square foot. I mean, forty cents a square foot versus building it, so it's either thirty or forty. But now, let's say this is gonna be a store. I'm still gonna come out the exact same time, whether it's thirty or forty, and what we're gonna charge is sixty cents a square foot. We're doubling it. We're already charging more. So how much more can you charge just because it's commercial? It's, you're already gonna be charging more than you would on a renovation. Because they're hanging a sign out front, is that fair that you can charge more on top of the more? I don't know. That's how I would look at it, but I.
There's probably much more codes for commercial than there is for residential.
It's just different codes. Not so much that there's more codes, it's different codes. You're just going through a different book and looking in, you know, different codes.
Probably more restrictive with the public coming in.
Yes.
Probably more safety issues.
Yep. There is, um, that's how the town's always had it set up. I.
Do you have a comparison from like a two thousand square foot house build in Lee to like a two thousand square foot house build in Nottingham? They're charging for living space, we're charging for the whole house. Like what is the breakdown?
I think we're.
Just to get an idea, like, okay, because I think the other, we're trying to drive a profit, but at the same time, we're also not trying to be like, it's so cheap to build in Nottingham that everybody just keeps flooding into Nottingham to build. Or it's like, well, I've, I've heard somebody say like, well, it's way easier to build a development Nottingham than it is in Dover, because it's cheaper. So then it's like.
Yeah.
So then it's like, okay, do we want, we just hear people talking about the growth in town going too fast. If this is something we can do to either help slow it down or, or whatever.
Charging, or you might be charging, say a new house. By the time we add everything up, a permit's gonna cost you about twelve thirteen hundred dollars and then you also have to pay all your subs. You gotta pay your electrical mechanic and stuff like that, but a building permit might be thirteen hundred bucks. In Lee or another town, it could be slightly higher. But again, keep in mind, when you're doing all those other projects, that aren't the big house, we're charging for them too. So we're still making, we're, we're actually higher than other towns on the smaller end. Um, if you were asking me house for house, I would say we probably are a little bit cheaper than some of the towns around us.
A lot of the towns around us, when I did the research, um, they moved on to a project cost, which Dale and I had a conversation about that earlier. It's a completely different way to calculate it. You're relying on the contractors, like how much it's gonna cost to construct what they're doing. And then it's a percentage based on that. So it's, it's not even really an apples to, i- it's very much an apples to oranges comparison. To what we're charging. You'd have to find somebody that has a fee structure very similar. I think Northwood's still.
Northwood.
Uh, Northwood and Stratford are still on a fee base, but most of the other towns like Lee and Barrington.
I don't believe they are. I, usually that's more your bigger, you know, your maybe a Durham, and I don't know, so don't quote me on any of this, but. Your bigger towns usually go that way, but they have more resources to calculate this. If I'm a contractor and I'm gonna pay my permit fee based upon what the house cost me, I'm gonna build a house for two thousand dollars. Prove me wrong now. Now the building inspector is gonna spend hours and hours on end and it's gonna be like, well, what is this for Mike the table cost? And then when you get there, it's actually granite. You know, you're gonna be spending tremendous amount of time. This would be a full-time job at that point if you were to go to a cost base. And I'm out.
But it doesn't sound like it would be that much beneficial to us cuz you'd have to lower other things in order to keep it.
And then i- it, there's just so many problems with that though because. One, they're going to obviously lowball you. Now you're spending all this extra time trying to figure out what they're doing. It's not even like you can go into the books. You have to go and get the research from them, which they're trying to hide from you. That's just the reality. And then at the end, then you have to go back and besides going and inspecting, you have to go through and be like, oh. You said you were gonna use, you know, this, but you use that on every item. The amount of money that you'd be paying for me or somebody like me would take away any savings that you would have made.
Right. Only makes sense if you got big numbers. You can lose this one.
You might have somebody that's, that's what they do. You know, you have a full-time administrative person. So the short answer is.
We're all right.
I'm comfortable where we're at. I think the system is working. We've never been in the red. We're always in the black, um.
Other than the solar, you'd like to see that initially.
I'd like to see the solar increase and that isn't even so much as far as making money, it's just keeping it fair. It's. You know, people, the solar companies are basically getting it for nothing right now that other towns are charging for.
And they charge plenty to the homeowners.
Do you feel that any of our fees, since you see them all the time, that are unjust, that should be changed? So like maybe no fee?
No, the only thing that could be controversial would be after the fact, if somebody doesn't pay, get a permit and they do the work. Our zoning ordinance says you have to pay double. That would be the only thing and that's really to stop people from trying to get away from it. You know, if an electrician comes in and I'm not in the office and he's here. And he comes in, he gets a permit the next day, I'm not gonna charge him double. He was here, we weren't here, it's on us. If somebody wires their whole house and gets away and tries to be like, oh, I didn't know I needed a permit, yeah, you're paying double. Um, that would be the only thing that'd even be remotely, you know, if you don't get a permit, do you pay double?
Have we ever charged somebody?
Yes, we, we've done that. Yeah. I've, I've held people accountable for that.
How did that go over?
They pass it on to the homeowner. They don't care. I mean.
It's usually a contractor.
Yeah. No, I mean, we have a lot of, you know, you're talking about ABUs and stuff like that. You have, let's be honest, you have people living in campers, you have people that have remodeled their houses and. This happens a lot. People will remodel their house, nobody will know about it. And then when they go to sell, at the banks come in and they wanna look to see all these permits and then they're like, oh, why are you doing this to me? You know? It's because you got away with it for twenty years and you didn't pay taxes because you were hiding this and you knew what the rules were. So you have to bring it up to code today, not code from nineteen eighty or ninety when you did it, it's coming up to code today. Um, that's kinda, it's not a punitive thing, it's holding people accountable, but yet they still got away without paying taxes for twenty years on it. You know, there's nothing you can do about that. You might, we're not gonna, if somebody identifies it, we will approach it, which we do all the time. But how are you gonna know if somebody's remodeling the inside of their house and you don't know about it? The other area, so to answer your question, John, um, no, I don't see any permits that's too high. The only other thing that we don't do is we don't charge for fences. Do we wanna do that or not? We've never charged for a fence. You wanna put a fence on your property, are we charging? There's nothing in our ordinance for that. Do we wanna do that? Do we don't wanna do it? We, we don't have a, a fee for that.
How much do we charge for a shed?
So a shed, it depends on how big it is. If it's a hundred and forty-four square feet or less, we don't charge anything. Um, besides that, it falls under the same thing as everything else. It's either the, you know, thirty or forty. If you're remodeling a shed, which actually happens, people will bring a shed from somewhere else or something, but it's thirty cents a square foot. That falls into like what I was talking about before, where it doesn't make a difference what it is, you're paying thirty cents a square foot. But if it's a hundred and forty-four square feet or less, twelve by twelve, we don't charge anything. It's free.
Are you requiring a permit for shit, uh, for a fence?
It's a gray area.
So the answer is no right now.
If we're gonna be official, no, no. Um. We have discussions with people. We tell them what the state rules are, what the rules are. We always encourage people to keep their fence a foot off their property line. Technically, you can go right to your property line, but if you screw up and you go six inches over and the other owner says, get it off my property, he can, or she can. Um, so we do have conversations with people, but typically we do not charge for fences. Um.
We tax them for them though?
For fences?
No. I've, I've got one and it's not.
We tax you for your shed.
Yes. Somebody laughed at me cuz I went and got a permit for it, so.
If it is a stone wall slash fence, we do charge for that. Like especially around the water, if somebody's building like a rock wall type thing and that, we consider that a structure. We consider anything man-made a structure.
Well, then why do I consider a fence a structure? Then why aren't we taxing on a, if you're taxing on a stone wall, then why would we do the same for a fence? That's a whole nother discussion on something else that's not.
We're not taxing or charging a permit fee, right?
We'll, we'll figure that one out. That's.
It's, there's nothing on the fee schedule for it.
For a main made stone wall, I retain it all.
The rate, the, the way I look at it is I consider the stone wall a structure, so we charge. Our fence doesn't say, the fence is not on the fee structure. So I think that would be kinda, you know, somebody has a big yard, you're gonna charge them thirty cents a square foot for a fence. They're gonna be paying more for the pe- the fee if we were to go by that way than they would be for the fence.
Right.
So maybe we come up with a fee for the fence and it's just, whether it's a set amount or something reduced, I don't know.
Well, do you have to go inspect that fence and say?
No.
I mean, you know.
I don't inspect fences.
Okay, that, okay, that's.
Yeah.
Part of the, part of the fee is, is covering your costs of going out to inspect. If you're not inspecting them then.
The only time that I would even get remotely involved in that is if it is. On the front of the yard and it's in our right of way for snowplows or something like that, or if a neighbor complains. If, if we get a complaint, we had a complaint over on Barrington Road. I spent a considerable amount of time this summer dealing with a fence, but that was more of a complaint than a permit. You know, and then following what the state, um, recommendations are and guidelines and things like that. Like if you have, they had over a ten-foot fence, it was considered a spite fence. So that kind of became a problem, you know, hiding the other pieces, person's view of the water. Neighbor against neighbor.
Sometimes they make good neighbors fences, sometimes they don't.
Well played. So the bottom line is my recommendation is we increase solar and I think that would suffice. Do you have any other questions for me?
Does it for me?
Are you good with your hours?
Yeah.
The schedule that you're working? I mean, cuz this, this is the time to talk to us about it, so.
No, I have the ability to do more hours. I'm retired from the state, so I'm very conscious, conscious of that. That I don't put myself even close that I'm ever gonna get in trouble.
No, but like your regular office hours are working for you and everything like that. You don't feel like it needs to change to, you don't need to do anything like that.
It's so unpredictable. Last Monday, I had nobody in my office. Nobody, so I could just do paperwork. This morning, and we were talking about it, I had over fifteen people in my office before nine AM. It's like, it's so, it's a hit or miss up to do something. You just don't know when they're gonna come in. I mean, today was so incredibly busy and last week I had nothing. But yeah, we're keeping up, we're doing fine. Um.
Well, I do, more as of whether your, I know your office hours are all in the mornings, but whether you feel like that. If you'd rather be doing things in the morning and change your office hours to later.
No, it's a balance because the.
Kind of up to you. I'm just asking for.
It's not really fair to contractors. They're looking to like start their day and my first inspection's at ten AM. And I'm like, I won't be out there till ten fifteen. So a lot of times if they want sheet rock, they gotta wait for me to come out there to look at the insulation beforehand. So I don't wanna extend that and take away from the ability to be out in the field. The only thing that would be, and it's worked very well, um, Lori has been a tremendous help for years. I've been saying that. When, when I first started here, I was spending a lot of time in the office and not doing enough inspections or at least fighting to get the inspections done. Lori's been a tremendous help as far as helping with the office work, but she's a snowbird, so she's gone, but fortunately it's also. Quiets down a little bit in the winter time, but that office definitely needs. Just part-time, part-time administrator person to help just do all the paperwork and filing, so you can spend more time actually in the field doing what you're paying me to do. So I'm going to, she's gone now, so that's gonna be a little bit of an adjustment, but it's not, we'll be slowing down once. October rolls around hopefully. Usually October, November, December are the quiet ones. January then starts up again in February.
Would you say that'd be a ten-hour a week job?
Yeah, I think that's about what Lori's doing now.
Yeah.
Usually about four hours, two days a week.
Yeah. It's just enough to take the job.
We are coming up to budget season, not saying we're doing it, but it's just something to, for the back of our mind to, when doing things, I see.
And another way of looking at it is, to be perfectly honest, you pay me a lot more than you're paying her. It's cheaper to have, have somebody here doing that work instead of paying me to do filing and things like that. You're actually saving money by having her.
Well, we also might be able to split that job with something else in town.
Yeah, I think that's kinda how, like when she came on with Chris, that's what was happening. I don't know.
Yeah, she was doing, uh, some clerical work in the town office as well, but I mean, we've had her focus just because it is limited time. She's only there for five months.
Yeah. She was a big help with the nine-one-one. She was involved in that, did a lot of research for the nine-one-one updates and stuff. Um.
She's done a lot of roads research, especially when we accepted a lot of the private roads.
And the thing about her is, um, speaking as an individual, not a position, she's extremely competent, so. Her doing, you know, ten hours a week might be the same as, you know, just somebody else doing fifteen or something. She's really good.
Thank you.
No, I, I like having this conversation. I actually got quite educated on stuff that I probably forgot about or. Didn't know, so.
Well, thank you for the invite.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you.
Hopefully you're not here till ten.
All right, Al.
How's it going? Facilities Director, Alan Trent, twenty gram up the road.
Are we recording?
Uh, yeah, I am recording. Actually, I have it, I have it going, um, while I want you to break down.
What can I do for you guys?
Do you wanna start with the gym floor?
Yeah, start with the gym.
Yeah.
And can you give us an outline too of projects and where you stand on the projects that are going on presently in town?
We have the shuttered back half of the community center down to insulation.
This is more for people that are listening or when we're probably just to.
Yeah, okay.
And we know a lot of it, but I'm just saying for, you're here. People might wanna know what you're doing.
So we're on our third dumpster, thirty yarder is ready for the insulation and the wall board to go into that.
That's out back.
Out back, yeah, the shuttered part of the community center. That's ready to be, pretty much just the exterior walls will be left and the bathroom partition walls. And the file storage closets that we have out back.
So bathroom partition walls will be coming down.
Pretty much wide open to the exterior walls by the end of next week.
Oh, nice.
And then we can start talking about how to handle any mitigation. Will be the next step back there.
Yeah.
And that would be pretty much, we can close up that project by the end of this year for that Warren Article money.
Perfect.
The new meeting room, the conference room two. Community room two. That will be started also in the next two weeks. We'll be in there doing demo and putting the support beam in.
Now you got that on order, that Liam?
It's stocked in the lobby yards, yeah. Yeah, they, they stock those now. So it's, that's, that's good. Yeah, it's all, there's no special order of cost or anything. It's stocked items.
And that's what, twenty-six feet, did you say?
Roughly twenty-six feet wide.
Yeah.
And you'll be taking down that wall when you put that structure up, that beam up?
Correct. Yeah, it'll be open to the ceiling height of the back. I'll call it the back hallway.
It's gonna be stepped like this. This is drop ceiling, level drop ceiling and then it's gotta step down behind or above what would be the board table.
We go from nine feet to seven and a half feet in that, that saw put it down area.
And this is prep work to get the room finished, the stuff that needed to get done for what we wanna make it, what we're gonna use it for.
Correct.
As the conference room. We need the wall down for the space in order to put it in there. Again, I might be repeating myself, but this is more for people at home that's listening to this conversation. That's not, doesn't know. Right, where this money's going or what we're doing with it.
Yeah, you're, you're correct.
This is why I'm, I'm, I know I'm speaking in a way, but I'm trying to make sure that people can understand what we're doing.
Right, yeah, mov- moving this, this meeting room down the hall for Rec to have this as offices and. I don't wanna say play area, but they're, they're, they're new offices from the twelve by twenty-four. Section that they have coming into this thirty by thirty-six area.
And so, how long do you think it'll take to finish conference, the conference room? If you start it in a couple of weeks?
No, it's not much to do. It's, it's kind of probably three or four weeks for the, I'll say the delays between the different subcontractors, but. We have the sound tech going in there for low voltage. We have quotes for the mini split for the AC and heat wall unit. The drywall quote's already in, so. It's, it's kinda just how fast can we knock it all down from one sub to the next?
Is there a lot of drywall to go in?
There, we're getting rid of the three or four back windows.
Okay.
And that wall right now is only two by three exterior wall, so we have to build that up for insulation value. We have to make that wall bigger. It's not, it's kinda like.
It's two by three?
It's, it's.
It seems like a little hallway.
You can, yeah, you can, you can see outside pretty much in the, once the drywall comes down, it's, it's kind of a. Old, old edition wall.
Yeah.
It worked back in, when they did it in the seventies, but it's time for a new wall.
Perfect.
So you're lining up everything so that room's gonna be finished? So you have everything lined up so that when, when you're done, when we say done that room. It's painted, it's done, everything's, the wiring's gonna be ready to go and it's gonna be ready for us to move in.
I'd, I'd be happy for Halloween.
That quick?
It's six, six weeks.
Yeah, but the, the biggest thing that we're waiting on right now is the audio visual company, um I have a couple of them working on. How to tie into our existing system just to get that room up and running and then in phase two upgrading our broadcast equipment. Just so that we, we don't delay, because if we're replacing everything, it's going to take significantly longer. Because we're talking about um our controller, which is in the storage room and running the feeds and the fiber optic and everything, so. Phase one, we'll be getting that room up and running with microphones, camera, broadcast into the existing system. And then phase two, which will probably take place after the first of the year, will be upgrading the actual equipment that feeds to channel twenty-two and does a recording for YouTube.
Each subcontractor on my end is, is the, the demo, the beam and the framing is, is like three days. There's, there's nothing really substantial there. It's probably two days for the, the mini split, the line sets and things like that, but it's, it's, every, every sub is only gonna be a few days. It's not, it's not a big renovation back there, it's retrofit, not really a renovation.
Then how about this room for the rec department? That'll be next, or will it be going?
We're hoping to get that room done first before we transition the next year, that way, you know, we can continue the meetings without interruption.
Yeah.
Yeah, mov- moving this operation first and then this would be empty to work in, but there again, this is, I'll, I'll say putty in paint, there's, there's really nothing. We have estimates for scraping the popcorn ceiling down. And, and not sure if ever source is part of the light upgrade here or not.
Yeah, we have to follow back up with um Harley, because he did, he did have a proposal last year, but we just haven't presented it yet.
Great. As far as the community center upgrade for that, for LEDs. But there again, minimal, we have to cut, cut a door in the wall over here.
To go into the, the existing offices?
To become storage for them.
Yeah, okay.
And we have, we're able to save a door from out back, that's a steel pipe door, so. We already have the door on, on site from out back. So it's.
Nice.
So you think then by the end of the year, this'll be done, that'll be done?
Yes, yeah, for sure by the end.
Yeah.
Um well, you know, one of the things that, I bring this up for the fact is that when we go to deliberation. And we start talking about our budget, and start talking about the things. I would like to be able to sit there and look at people in town and say, guess what? Look at this, what we did this year with the money that we put aside, the money that the Warren Articles passed. We accomplished one, two, three, four, five, six of these things here.
Right.
So the fact that. When we're asking for more for next year or new Warren Articles, we're showing the progressions to the town that it's getting done. That's why I'm, I'm just, I'm asking you these questions right now, I'm not trying to harry you on, but I'm just trying to, you know, we have a responsibility to say to the people of the town in Nottingham. Hey, we, you, you gave us a responsibility to make sure this, these projects got done and they're gonna be taken care of, so.
We got them done.
That, that's, you know, nothing worse than going, it's like, well, where'd the money go? And you say, well. But so far right now.
We lost it.
Well, we didn't lose it, we never lose it.
I think, I think a lot of it's on, on the, on that side of the budget side, I think we're doing very well with our, our cost so far this year.
Yeah.
I don't have a budget line items here, but it's.
Oh, we'll let you know if you go over it, I'm just kidding.
I'll be at your meeting next time.
Oh, we can run the gym floor.
Tested positive in the mastic, not the tile, but it's, it's all the same, if it's there, it's there. So those, those tests came back. And removal cost was, I don't wanna say too expensive, but it's.
It was expensive.
It, it's, it's in the fifties, high fifties, so. It's kinda, are we gonna encapsulate? And just move forward without removing the base layer like we did with the kitchen floor? It's.
That isn't acceptable, means Dale caught me on it last week and said that's exactly what they did with the kitchen floor, as long as you encapsulate it, then you're mitigating the problem.
It's, it's the warranty of the contractors, the flooring contractors that we. They won't go with the, the seventeen or twenty-five year warranties if it's encapsulated. It goes to a, the workmanship one year, but they don't warranty them. If, if you encapsulate the floor and there's a moisture block because we capped everything. Then these tiles that are existing lift off the concrete because it's a double vapor barrier. Now, if you, if you put that layer on top, then you're taking the risk of that happening. And uh fifty-six or fifty-eight thousand to, to remove it, or the twenty-six or so thousand to go over it, so. If we do both, we're up, we're up in the mid eighties. To get it done, that, if we go down to concrete, we're, we're at eighty-five, eighty-six thousand, depending on who we award the bid to. And that's, I don't think that's something any of us, I won't speak for you, the board, but I, I feel like that's too high.
So let's just speak around, so let's say that we do encapsulate, put it on. Nottingham lock runs through and the floor peels up. What do we do then? Do we have to then strip, are we then spending fifty, or are we gonna?
We, we wouldn't.
Would we, would, would we be able to fix?
The area.
The area for like two thousand dollars, because we go in and we kinda deal with a small area and then re-encapsulate, so just so that we understand.
With the glue down plank that were, not, the new bids, not the, not the welded vinyl floor, if it was a welded sheet stock. That would be kinda like a, a total failure, but with the, with the six inch by three or four foot vinyl glue down planks, you could replace. A couple at a time. That, that is a benefit to going with the vinyl plank instead of the.
But if it comes up because of a failure of the floor, are we then dealing? You know what I mean, like we're dealing with a failure of the asbestos, so then we're, we're dealing with some mitigation on some process. And then is that able to be levelized out and recovered? I guess, I don't wanna be like, oh, we did it, and then three years down the road we found out, oh, it did fail, now we're in it for the eighty, or if it's something that can be.
Right, and, and it's, it's not something I wanna decide. And I, I don't know if we throw this to the town vote in, in March or April or not, if it's, I don't. Personally, if it was my house, I would just cap and go over it, but it's, it's not, it's not a two hundred fifty square foot. You know, bathroom or, or four hundred square foot kitchen floor, it's, it's the gym.
And we have been successful with the kitchen floor thus far, however, it's a different type of flooring and a different use.
In a different area, just thinking like, the doors come in, moisture could come in, depending on, I mean, I'm sure the flooring people have dealt with this before, but.
It, it's more the moisture from the ground, which it, it's very dry over there under the ground. It, there's not any moisture problems with our slab. We have vegetation issues in the past, but it's not water coming from underneath our floor.
Correct.
It's not moisture from below the slab, it's, it's moisture coming in from the sides, which the gutter quote would. If we get the gutters put on this year, then.
Right.
That would get the water out of this corner. But there is some drains that were punched into the sidewalk also, I think that was more of a, a, a one season issue with the new, the new stone dust path that I put in before the drains and all that is. That's been fixed, the water can get out now. Gutters would help that even more.
Okay.
I don't, I don't wanna make the decision and it's.
That's what we're here for.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's our job. We just wanna know.
It's, it's just too much to.
Yeah, we're not, I mean.
I wanna spend the eighty-five and do it, do it correctly, do it, not that it's incorrect to go over it, but do it from the bottom, start fresh. If, if you do a renovation on your house, your front steps, you don't try to fix a couple cords, you rip the whole thing out, you put a new staircase in. But it's, the Warren Articles for twenty-five and we're at eighty-five, so.
It's a big difference. Where does the money come from?
The three hundred.
Yeah.
Or the budget that he said he was doing so good on on the other part.
It's.
Yeah, how much is left from them?
I don't have a tally, I think we, we authorized like twenty-six thousand dollars in expenditures to come out of that building, made his expendable trust fund, and that's it so far, but there's additional. Cause I think that only got us three quarter to.
Mm-hmm.
I don't mind just going over, oh, you're in my opinion right now, I mean, the building here is. How old's the building, Steve? You've been here longer than me.
You've got me, it's old.
So you know, I mean, I think I'm not predicting twenty-five years down the road, but where does the town stand at twenty-five? Is this building gonna be up to, a code to keep up to the town in twenty-five years? The flooring satisfy us for the next twenty years? By doing what we're doing?
I think it's a seventeen year wilders flooring, I think was it, the Shaw flooring, I think was seventeen year commercial floor anyways.
Right, so I mean.
We're not, we're, we're not saying thirty years, we're, we're saying eighteen to twenty-five is.
Yeah.
Is probably any, if something did happen, nobody would pay out anyways.
No, it's.
So, like.
What we're asking, what we're asking to do and the money that we've set aside to ask them to do, is it worth, is, is, is where I'm going on there?
Mm-hmm.
If you say to me, sure, to redo that whole floor and you know that, it costs fifteen hundred dollars a year, if you break the number down, whatever. That's a good deal to have a new floor, you know? For what it is, and if it's gonna get a seventeen, twenty years, if we can get that far, perfect, it's worth the amount of money we're investing in it with the use that we get out of it. A hundred grand or eighty when you rip up and redo it. Well, I mean, just consider this building. I don't think it's worth the expenditure to spend on this building when we start doing it there, that, I mean. And I know the old Nottingham way was just kinda fix things and you know, halfway get it done, but. You know, we're not talking about the, the brand new building that we just put up, you know, ten years ago, we're talking about a building that's been here for seventy years now or whatever, or. You know, by the time that floor goes, this building could be a hundred years old.
This floor that we're sitting on now is also the, the same floor.
Oh yeah, we know, yeah, oh, well aware.
It, but there's no signs of, of moisture, it's, it's, it's aged, right, it wasn't, it wasn't waxed in time and sawed down under it, but it's not water damage.
Right. Still solid.
Right.
So.
And the floor in the gym is the same way, right? Still solid.
Right.
Well, I mean, it, yeah, it's cracked, and obviously we have the trench.
Right. And it, that, all this stemmed from the, the, the septic failure, right?
And the drain.
So the, the under drain, that, that's what got the Warren Article for a new floor and things like that, so it, it wasn't. But that, that price was for the go over like the kitchen.
And so when they encapsulate it, they'll level it off as well?
Right.
Any, yeah.
Yeah, they'll, they'll still, they'll still shim up the low spots.
Yeah.
It was only five eighths of an inch out, out from high point to low point.
Oh really?
When you're, when you're in there, it looks like a little more like it curls down, but we, with the laser, we only saw five eighths of an inch from, from the high point to low point. The back, the, the ball field corner.
Mm-hmm.
Is the low. So that's also kind of a tolerable amount for a seventy-something year old gym floor, you don't really notice it when you're in there. We could ask the pickleball players if it. It fades to the right, yeah.
So that'll skim over the whole floor.
Right.
And then lay the plank in there.
Yeah.
Uh, on any of the quotes, did you see anything that stood out or was missing from one or the other that the quote might not?
I think trash, trash removal was left on. One of them was not responsible for trash. Right, the last meeting I wasn't here, we, I think I remember somebody saying that out loud.
Yeah, one says here, town Nottingham provides site dumpsters for waste disposal.
But we, we do happen to have that for out back, so that's. It's also, if that's a sticking point for, for you guys, then that would be.
But I mean, how much waste is there?
They could amend it.
I was gonna say.
We're not taking anything out.
We're not ripping anything out.
So it's gotta be kinda miniscule.
Yeah, the box is car- cardboard.
Minimal.
Right, it would, that, that, that thirty yarder out back would be just fine, probably wouldn't notice.
And we have a cardboard dumpster.
Right.
For that and. You could break all the cardboard down and bring it down to our recycling center too, make more money. Hey.
Are they buying cardboard?
No, we recycle it.
But are they, are they buying?
Corrugated cardboard.
Are, are they buying it?
Corrugated.
Corrugated. They, they are right now actively buying.
Hmm.
Alright, do we wanna make any type of motion on this, or? Well, do you wanna finish our conversation and then we can go on with?
Yeah.
So the uh.
What else is there?
The recycling center, our walkway up to our, where we throw the trash into. I see all the boards and all the pressure treated and everything is out back, where they put the cardboard, it looks like we've got a frame going, is there a time set aside for that?
Those panels came in, the, the through flow panels.
The what?
Through flow, the, like expanded plastic panels.
Yeah.
They came in, they were back ordered for delivery reason to the lumberyard, I guess, but they came in.
Installed now?
We haven't installed them yet, but I.
Have you took delivery of them yet?
Yes, we have.
Good. So what are we gonna do, you're gonna build a like-for-like for the trash compactor?
Yes.
And then what about the?
The center, we're doing pressure treated two by sixes on the trash compactor ramp and on the steps. But we're doing the through flow panels in the center, so where people are most likely to walk in the middle, the, any rain or snow can fall through before it collects. Instead of doing expanded metal, we went with a plastic product. They use them for docks, the through flow system is mostly for docks.
Well, like I say, that does matter, it's, don't matter. Now for the cans? What are we, are we doing a ramp, or are we gonna be doing stairs, or what's going on over there?
It's a four foot by four foot platform of the same product for the ramp.
Is it gonna have a railing?
With, with railings, right.
When will those be done? You're on the spot, so I was gonna ask.
Same, two weeks from now.
Okay.
It's, it's gonna be like, two to three weeks we'll be working for the town. We can get it all.
So like come November, we're gonna, we're gonna have a lot to talk about when we see the whole town show up at, at the election. If people ask us questions, we're gonna be at least.
Check it out.
So I wanna be done by Halloween.
Fuck, hey.
It'll be the town.
Well, just a little joke, I mean, but not, but we'll, we'll see thirty-seven hundred people, I mean, everybody in the town's gonna show up basically for that election, so. I'm sure we'll hear all the good, the bad and the ugly when it comes to that.
We appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, you'll, you'll get it, absolutely.
Anything else? Are you working on anything else?
Not actively.
Okay.
No, it's the, the maintenance, the, the August heat, the July heat that we had was kinda more on the plumbing side, but. It's been pretty quiet in town the last couple of weeks.
And do you, have you noticed anything that you feel that we should? Be paying attention to for the next six months to a year that we haven't, that we don't have in the, in the works right now?
I have the building reports will be ready for, for the budget committee. It was October third was the meeting, the planning?
Yeah, the, for the budget committee?
And CIP.
Yeah.
I can have all the, every building inspection report will be ready for.
Perfect.
So we can make a decision on where the budgets might have to go, but.
Or if we need to write Warren Articles for certain items that are coming up.
What do you think about the old firehouse, that back wall?
My, I can sit in this chair and speak from a president. My. I, might be good to sell that building off. I, I don't, I don't see putting the money into it. We don't. We don't, I don't feel that the town has any value of maintaining that building.
Okay.
It, the, the, the metal, the metal roof quote was around thirty-eight thousand per replacement.
Does it need to be replaced? Or does it need to be painted?
It's, it's, it's the, the shingles and the ply, and the, I won't say plywood, but the, the boards and the sheathing under. The metal roof is rotted. It's, it's, it's the, the shingles and the ply, and the, I won't say plywood, but the, the boards and the sheathing under the metal roof is rotted. It's been taking in water for a while.
Okay.
It would be the back wall that you, you asked about, that's, that the wood siding, the chimney's letting go and, and pulling away. There's a lot of, it's standing. I don't think it's gonna fall over anytime soon, but it, it would be all.
It's taken water.
All sheathing, siding, and roofing needs to be replaced.
That's the building.
Asia and right, well, the cinder blocks are okay for now. But they do leak from Saturday. It's.
So, that might be guys, it's one of the questions that we write, do we have a Warren article for the cost of demolishing that building?
I think it'd be more valuable to a private citizen.
Sell it, not demo it.
The, I mean, now, here's the question.
Yeah, you're subdividing the land, it gets, and it's.
Cause it's not so much, probably the other ones over there.
The green sheet, old town hall, and the fire station room on one parcel of land.
Has its own septic system on the, on the east side.
Yeah, is that good?
Well, it's not joint. It doesn't share, it doesn't share the holding tank with the SAU.
No, but could, I mean, again, could the town use that for something else down the road, the land? I mean, it's valuable land because of the fact that we have structures all around it. It's part of our center of town. We sell it to somebody, God only knows what's gonna be put there, what's gonna change that. When you have the old grange, you have this, you have the.
Nestle parking.
I mean, it could.
If, if the conversation would be to, 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 to raise, raise the building, then I, I would, I would say we, we dig it out. Put a retaining wall on the backside and make it a level, flat area.
Well, I mean, if, if the building costs a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand, I'd rather just level it. That's my opinion, and just down the road, build something else on it.
If you, if you can't get rid of the land, if you, if you can't subdivide it, then. I don't know if the ledge under the ground or what, what's under the ground, but it would be more valuable.
It was built that way for a certain reason, why it's so high up and it's.
Right. Be more valuable as a level lot to, to a private citizen, or it, it's not a bad lot. It's just steep.
Right, and then it gets into the parking with what's now the SAU and everything else where you could cut it off. It would just cost a lot of. And that's another discussion.
Yeah.
Conversation for another night.
I would say, I, I would be in favor of the town keeping the land and not selling the land, but that's another night.
It became very, like, we, we got close on that back in April, and it, it creeped up over a hundred and fifty thousand to get that in.
Indecent shake.
But, yeah, between the, the, but we got the new furnace from the DPW, I believe, the, the new tanks and things like that, so.
Yeah, but you know, again, the building, the way it sits now is it's not functional for what we need.
No, in our, our second tenant, at least a bay and a half, um, we weren't actually able to accommodate because of the moisture in there. The moisture that's in the building was too significant that it was causing the parts that they were gonna be storing in there to.
Right.
Like, our size of rust, but.
The building's not very good. It's just, it's.
It's served its purpose.
It's served its purpose, so.
I think our current renter would probably rent another bay or two.
All right, well, that's not on for.
It's not. Let's move on.
But it's on the radar.
It is on the radar.
That's, all right, um, all right, so it sounds like we're gonna see a lot of stuff gonna be done, um, by Halloween. So, by the beginning of November ish, which is good. That's what I really wanted to hear from you tonight. Uh, we'll make a decision on the flooring, whether we do that after, or tonight, or tomorrow, or this week.
Or we just do it now?
Sure. If you wanna go forward, we can do that.
Yeah.
Everybody okay? Everybody look to the things?
Yeah.
So, we've got one, two. We've got four. Guys got all four quotes?
No.
Okay.
The same ones from our meeting last week.
Yeah, yeah. So, we had Minuteman that came in at sixteen. We had Portsmouth Quality Flooring came in at twenty-two. We had Ed's Flooring America coming at twenty-seven, and then we had Wilder Flooring coming at twenty-three-five almost.
There's Jamie Fraser for twenty-four-five. That, was that said out loud?
Um, that was labor only, not flooring though. Correct. I think that's why it wasn't given into consideration because of what's on.
Right, yeah, labor, labor only, right.
Yeah, cause I don't have him in here in my packet.
Yeah, it was, it wasn't a comparable quote because it was just for labor. It didn't include material.
Okay.
Do you want to see him at all? I've been staring at him, so.
No, I think I've looked at him now.
And there was nothing that stood out? They, they all the exact same material flooring.
Same, same grade material, right?
Okay. Do you know why Minuteman has come in so much cheaper? Or are they?
I, I don't know.
Portsmouth Quality Flooring, that's, is that a large, that's kind of a larger company. Wilder, they're local.
Right.
I don't know Ed's, but Minuteman just. Comes in a lot less, but I'm curious, like, what's.
Missing.
I look, I looked at it a few times here again, the, earlier, and it's still. All the herbage is the same as the other two.
I mean, I tend to lean towards Wilder being a local person that. Well, I mean, it's not out of the realm of, it's kinda right in the middle of back.
We're all kinda local.
But I'll say one thing for Wilder is he does his installs to, it's not a subbed-out labor portion. It's his own, he'll, he'll be on-site.
They do a lot for the community, too, in terms of sponsorships for NYA, various other things like that. I mean, they're.
Right.
They've done a lot of stuff in town, too.
He's definitely a part of the community.
And you, I mean, I know you went through them. Uh, you recommend Wilder over the others?
Right. He's, he's my number one, right? Ed's number two.
You said Ed is number two?
Right.
Ed's flooring?
Yep.
I will say, like, reading the Wilder one, there's a lot more like.
Uh, where'd it go?
Talks about transitions and stuff like that, other things that are in here that are, they do seem to be missing from the Minuteman floor. Seems like he's cut the floor, but doesn't talk anything about. Transitions.
Some things would be assumed.
Okay.
Threat, thresholds, transitions.
All right.
But I agree, it's more, it's definitely more detailed from Wilder.
Is there a timeframe for these guys to get it done? Once, if we give the approval tonight. How long are we waiting?
That I don't have an answer for. We, we, for the, a couple of months ago, we met the first time, there was. Windows that were open, but I haven't asked them again.
Okay.
They've checked in with me, and I, I told them about the meeting two weeks ago and the meeting tonight. So, they, I think they're still trying to leave a window for the, uh, if they're awarded the job, they do need to put it on their schedule, too.
Mm-hmm, right. I mean, he's, I can't remember, Wilder, he was here, he spoke to us. I think he said, what, three days, though?
Wasn't gonna take extremely long time to.
Just think of the impact of the room, but we gotta get it done.
It's no good time to do it.
No, not, we've missed the summer window that would've been a time to.
Well, even then.
We wouldn't have had it because of summer camp.
Yeah.
Right. I thought that was between the end of school, and I thought that started summer camp. That was.
It was a short window. It's just long gone.
Is there a preferred time I could, if he's awarded tonight, can we reach out to him? What's, what's the preferred time?
I'd talk to Courtney, I guess.
For some of this work, just overseeing it for the town?
I'm not, I'm not flooring.
No, I don't.
Professional, but, yeah, I.
Checking in on.
Quote, gee-seeing the project.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm asking.
For sure, yeah.
Thank you.
What else?
I don't have, I don't know any of the other ones. I do know this is a in-town individual that has done a lot also for the community, and, and it's not an outrang- outrageously high or low bid, and he was here and was able to discuss things, so I'd. I'd make a motion to approve the Wilder flooring quote for twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty to renovate the gym flooring and encapsulate.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. On favor roll call?
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Tim DeBrio.
Hi, Matt Schrelin.
So, our, our flooring project has been awarded to Wilder Flooring, uh, out of Northwood, New Hampshire. Uh, to be determined update of s- starting, but we'll know that soon. You'll let Ellen know, so she can let us know?
We'll get it advertised.
What's, what's a good window for the town to say is?
I think, for Alan and Courtney.
Yeah, we can check with Courtney. It's mainly just gonna be notifying pickleball, basketball, martial arts, any other reviews in the building, but. Um, we're not renting the facility at this point, so it's just working around those extra curvatures.
And this is a project that's been award, I mean, the town voted on us doing so.
Yeah.
They know it's coming. Yeah, they, so.
Yeah, well, there's gonna be a little disturbance in the building while we're doing.
That's acceptable.
Yeah, to, to shut down a few things for a few days.
Not a problem.
Thanks, Ellen.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I ask a few questions from when you get open to the public?
For now, I mean.
You know that.
Well, if you don't mind, we're just gonna go to our town administrator report, then we have to go to non-public afterwards anyways, so.
I'll keep it short, and it, it's all, it's all for the conversations this evening with Dale. But a question about the, I know we're not talking about doing fence permits and things like that, but being. Being a landowner myself in town. A flat rate, I know it's, it was just talked tonight, it was something we put in concrete, but. Will there be agriculture exemption for fences? And if it does go for fence permits and things like that, it would be a, like, a flat rate. Up to like twenty-five dollars or something like that, but it, Dale, that, this kicked off, as Dale mentioned, square feet. So, that would be square feet of surface area of a fence, like a six-foot-high fence is six square feet every lineal foot.
Yeah, so I don't even think we're even close to discussing that, cause I never even thought about this till Dale said fence, and I asked about it, so.
Right.
I think answering any of those questions would be.
I feel like fence would be linear, like how long of a run you're doing, but I don't.
I would, I, I mean, again, whether, yeah.
I don't even know if we need to have it. It's, it's nothing that gets inspected by the building inspector, so, I don't know.
It would be, it'd just be a fee for a fence. I don't think we'd do it. Again, that's my opinion.
If it's a, a property line, lineal foot inspection, things like that, cause I, I, I do agree with Dale that it does take his time. For neighbor disputes on fences, that's, that's pretty much, a neighbor dispute is, in bigger cities out on the Seacoast, that's. Fence disputes are, it's a lot of time and resources and.
For what he was saying, it's not something that comes up that often for him.
In our town.
No, yeah.
So, that would just be, I don't have to go through all of it, but it's. Lineal foot is charged flat or flat rate.
Well, since we charge a flat rate for basically everything else, it'd probably be a flat rate. It would be a linear charge.
So, if I wanna run, if I wanna add on to my one point nine miles of electric fence in the future in this past, is what it'd be. Every time I.
But see, that's temporary. You could pull that rate down. I don't think that's, I think something that's like dug into the ground, not a stake put in, cause it's, while it's considered fencing, it's not. Boundary fencing or something like that.
Right, agri, agri, agricultural fencing is a whole different thing than, you know, your white vinyl.
Right.
Neighbor-blocking fence. You, you don't use that for.
If you mistakenly went over the property line, you'd be like, whoops, sorry, and you'd stick it out of the ground, put it into the ground, and, and everybody's like, fine, but if it. This other stuff's getting drilled, and I think if we were to do it, we'd have to open a public hearing that we were gonna be.
Oh, we'd definitely have to open a public, it has to go in front of the planning board for discussion, is, then, yeah, it's.
Don't scare me.
No.
That's a, that's a retro fee I don't wanna see in the mailbox. So, like, like brick, brick-and-mortar wall compared to a fieldstone, dry stack wall, and things like that would be. If it is considered, it would have to be a lot of herbage for.
Oh, it'd be, it'd be, yeah, again.
Trust me, you're bringing up lots of reasons why I don't wanna deal with the fence.
Right.
I'll keep going.
Yeah, we haven't had any issues with it in the years that I've been, so I don't see it to be something that. Find necessary to have a conversation about, or even put it up into the spectrum of things that need to be discussed.
Is there a height restriction on fences now? Is it like a six-foot standard, or? That's a Dale question.
Mm-hmm, yeah, cause I, I think that got more into, somebody was paying because they have, they're being taxed for a water view, and then somebody put a ten-foot high fence, so. And then I think it got into, why am I being taxed for something when they're purposely, so that's a.
Right.
That's a different thing.
Single case, right.
Yeah.
And that's a discussion on people's opinion, whether it be a tax for a water view, or if it's for this or that, but, well, that's another story, sorry.
I will, yeah, enough of your time tonight.
That's right. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna move back onto our agenda list and go to the town administrator's report.
Uh, the first thing that I omitted from my report, just a reminder, because we won't be meeting until after the first October. Um, the rec center hours will be converting to their winter schedule on October first, so technically.
The recycling center?
What's that?
The recycling center?
Recycling center.
Okay, he said rec.
I'm sorry, recycling center. Uh, winter hours, ten, one, it was going to affect, so back to Thursday through Saturday from nine to five. Extended Thursday hours will be done, I think, uh, whatever day that falls on the twenty-sixth of September, will be the last later evening.
Well, it should. It's getting dark at that, so, correct.
Uh, requests for proposals have been advertised for both legal services and audit services with a response deadline of October eighteenth. That'll be prior to, um, your second select board meeting in October. They'll be reviewed at the ten-twenty-one select board meeting. Um, I put out a request for bids for fuel, oil, and propane supply, and that's been also advertised with a deadline of ten-eighteen, and a bid award scheduled for the ten-twenty-one meeting. The six oh four B grant application package was submitted to New Hampshire DS on Friday, which was the due date for the update of the two thousand eight Pawtucket watershed management-based plan. Um, John Decker as select board rep, and Lori Nickerson, Tom Duffy, and the rest of the PLA, P L I A group. Um, put together a very good presentation. I included a copy, and I think I can add it, give you, maybe not. Um, but that has been submitted, and hopefully will adhere on the award, I think, the. Looking through the initial application package, I think the award was gonna be made in like early December, if I remember correctly. Um, Exeter Hospital has notified us of their intention to terminate their paramedic intercept program effective now. It's twelve twenty of two thousand twenty-four. Initially, when we got the notice, we heard through Facebook that it was going to be effective September twentieth. Uh, we had ten days' notice. There are a lot of towns that utilize, um, this, and a lot of them have interceptor agreements in place that require Monday-day notice, so. Um, a lot of the Seacoast chiefs, town administrators affected, um, everybody has been talking. It's gone to executive council, um, the state is assisting. We're talking about, uh, potentially regionalizing something through the county. There is a whole lot of discussion to take place. Um, obviously, this is a change with Exeter Hospital being bought out by, um.
That is real.
Yep, that is real, thinking. Um, the Noddy Fire Rescue Department has prepared a letter, which I was going to read into the record, and I think that it would be, um, a good thing for the board of selectmen to sign or endorse the letter in support of their efforts. and I think that it would be, um, a good thing for the Board of Selectmen to sign or endorse the letter in support of their efforts. Uh, it says, Dear Beth Israel Lady Health and Management of Exeter Hospital, on Monday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-four, the Nottingham Fire Department was stunned to learn via Facebook that the new owner of Exeter Hospital, Beth Israel Lady Health, would be terminating Exeter Hospital Paramedic Intercept Service, commonly known as Exeter A L S, after decades of operation effective Friday, September twenty, two thousand twenty-four. Obviously, this has been updated. Uh, the Nottingham Fire Department received official notice of the termination from Exeter Hospital via phone on Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand twenty-four. The decision to terminate this longstanding service with only ten days' notice demonstrates a reckless disregard for the health, safety, and well-being of the residents of Nottingham and dozens of other communities served by Exeter A L S. The E M S system in the area has already pushed the limit by increasing demand and shrinking number of E M S providers. The removal of Exeter A L S from the system will result in preventable deaths and adverse patient outcomes. Exeter A L S provides the necessary certifications and equipment to render life-saving care, including rapid sequence intubation, R S I, high-level positive airway pressure, BI path annihilation, and numerous paramedic-level medications not within the scope of practice of our advanced E M Ts. With only ten days' notice, Nottingham has no capacity to appropriately plan for or fund an alternative to Exeter A L S. Nottingham's residents will be at the total mercy of the mutual aid system for paramedic service. The long-term outlook is just as bleak, given the limitations of municipal budgeting as a practical matter. We cannot react within ten days to purchase more equipment, fund more personnel, or a mutual aid agreement with another agency to fill the void left by the termination of Exeter A L S. We appreciate that Exeter, Exeter A L S has been provided, has provided as a free service to taxpayers with revenue only generated from patient billing on less than fifty percent of the calls that are paramec ride and on our ambulance to the hospital. This means on many occasions, Exeter A L S has driven the forty-plus miles round trip to Nottingham for free. We understand with new ownership comes new priorities and objectives. We understand that running Exeter A L S intercept service may not be profitable and the need to reach a profitable and sustainable level. And the need to reach a profitable and sustainable level. We completely understand and be happy to negotiate a change in the terms of this necessary service. However, we do not understand shuttering Exeter A L S with virtually no notice to the immediate detriment of the public and the patients we jointly serve. Finally, we do not understand how this hasty decision will satisfy the mission statement of your organization to create healthier communities. One person at a time through seamless care and groundbreaking science driven by excellence, innovation, and equity. We implore you to think of the tens of thousands of people served by Exeter A L S, the same people you serve when they come through your doors. Consider the heart attack and respiratory distress patients that may die before they reach your facility without paramedic-level in- intervention. We ask you to reconsider or delay this decision, at least until terms can be negotiated or alternative arrangements can be made. Sincerely, the Nottingham Fire Rescue Department, and this will be signed by Chief Matt Curry and Deputy Chief Mark Peterson, and hopefully he was a board as well to consider.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Um, so that is, um, one of the action items to request, request a motion to endorse the letter drafted to Beth Israel Lady Health concerning the termination of Exeter Hospital Paramedic Intercept Services.
Make a motion that the Board of Selectmen endorse the letter drafted to Beth Israel Lady Health concerning the termination of the Exeter Hospital Paramedic Intercept Service.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
Thank you. Um, the conservation chair, Sam Demerit, has written a letter. Um, Andrew or Drew Stevens, who serves on the planning board, has expressed an interest in serving as an alternate to the Conservation Commission. His term would expire in April of two thousand twenty-seven with your support, so I would request a motion to appoint.
And we can do this because of the fact that we cannot have, uh, one, two, or two members that are on the planning and on conservation. So right now, we don't have anybody that sits on the planning board as a member, as a member of conservation, so this is why he's being appointed for that position. We always have a conservation commission on the planning, so.
Right.
That's the reason why he's.
I'll, uh, make a motion to appoint Andrew Drew Stevens as an alternate to the Conservation Commission with a term expiring April twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and, uh, second, uh, all in favor, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
There is a petition for license for a new utility pole to be set on Fort Farm Road. That is in the signature file. If you have any questions, it has been, uh, reviewed by our highway director, Steve Rollins, and again, this is standard layout provided by the utility company.
Yeah, it came in later, but.
Yes, that came in today. It came through the town clerk first.
Make a motion to approve the petition for license for a new utility pole to be set on Fort Farm Road.
Aye, second.
Uh, motion and a second. All in favor, roll call vote.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
Um, the next one, um, Steve Rollins has been searching for a pre-owned vehicle that would be suitable for the department. Obviously, we got rid of the two thousand sixteen Ford Explorer due to the suspension and other issues that it was experiencing. Um, we have the utility truck, which the board agreed unanimously that it could be used as a plow truck, but not put a sander in. The, the, the reason behind his search for this truck is namely, in the C I P plan, there was a plan to replace the two thousand sixteen Ford Explorer with a new F three fifty. Um, it would require a C D L driver. That was proposed, I think, in either two thousand, I think it was two thousand twenty-two or two thousand twenty-three, and it didn't come to fruition. Um, this truck that he has found is a two thousand eleven Ford F three fifty. It has approximately sixty-six thousand miles on it. It has a less than two-year-old, brand-new dump body on it, uh, which would assist the department with both ditching and brush removal. Um, it's mechanically sound, great condition. It has a small tear on the seat. That seems to be the only defect that Steve was able to find in it. Um, his intention would be to move the plow from the existing utility truck, use the utility truck as it was purchased to be there for an on-call, you know, housing, the chainsaws, or whatever they need. Um, but he could recycle the plow onto this truck, make it fully functional for a, um, winter plow truck, not requiring a C D L operator, and potentially remove a subcontracted route from our winter maintenance. Uh, we would put either somebody part-time or be able to transition one of our guys into it. I'm not really sure what the, the grand master plan is there, but that would be the intention. Um, we do have a hydraulic sander that we tried to dispose of, and we were unsuccessful. He wants to put that back on the five fifty, which it was purchased with. Um, again, difference in opinions between highway directors. He sees no functional error with it. You know, it's a sander, it's loud when you run it, but, um, he actually prefers that that be back on that truck. It's already set up for hydraulics. And then in turn, we would have that electric sander that's on the five fifty now moved onto this truck. So it would be set up for, um, use year-round between the dump body and then the plow and the sander. Um, so I think that's it. Uh, the original asking price was twenty-seven thousand five hundred. He was able to negotiate it down to twenty-five thousand dollars. It's, uh, located over at Avon Aggie Timber in Raymond, and it's a diesel, which is another positive. Um, if you would consider the purchase of this, then he's requesting that it would be withdrawn from the Senate Bill four oh one highway block funds. Uh, that's the fund that we purchased the brush chipper from. There is a remaining balance right now of sixty-three thousand four hundred and forty, and this purchase would be twen- twenty-five thousand.
And just, if you can remind us, the S B four oh one funds can specifically only be used for?
To supply the budget, not supplement, and it has to be used specifically for highway department-related, or highway roads. So this would fit the parameter.
Has this truck been checked out by anybody?
It has been checked out by Steve Rollins. He went and looked at it.
Have we had like a diesel mechanic look at it? Have we had anybody that actually?
Not that I'm aware of.
Besides.
I mean, I looked at it. I kinda found it and forwarded it to Steve.
Okay.
Um, I haven't personally looked at it, but it met the basic criteria that it was green, to fit the rest of the trucks, and, um, the, if, I think she forwarded the thing, the truck had quite a bit of work done to it, and you can just kinda see the, how, what they were listing in it for maintenance that had been done for. It's not like they were trying to hide anything. It seems extremely well, extremely clean, especially for a two thousand eleven. Some say, I mean, sixty-six thousand is not many miles for a truck like this, and usually what kills the trucks on these highway departments is salt, but not mileage. Seems overall like, considering the new truck costs in the neighborhood of eighty-five thousand plus to get into this three fifty range with a dump body on it.
What do we roughly pay for, I guess, this different routes that we have that probably cost a different amount of money for the subcontractors that we use?
It depends on the, the piece of equipment that's being used by anywhere from a hundred and five to a hundred and fifty an hour.
And those roads have been done by a subcontractor, yeah.
This is a smaller truck, so obviously it would be able to navigate some of the narrower roads around the lake.
So we'd still have to hire a subcontractor to drive?
We do. We have multiple subcontractors that do, um, I think we have three of them that are doing the Potackaway side of it, or two of them over there and one on North River Lake.
With our vehicles?
No, no, we subcontract.
So this one would have to have.
This would have to have a driver, so whether we put somebody in there part-time would be the intention.
So I'm, I'm, sorry. You know, you start thinking if it's a hundred, and again, I'm sure it's a great truck, but here's me thinking budget-wise. You're paying a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollars, right? That's what we're paying out, not a town employee, subcontractor. Now, we're gonna get a subcontractor to drive our truck, or will it be a town employee driving our truck? Will we have to hire another town employee, or will one of the guys be able to drive the truck? Key is, if we're paying an employee for the town to drive the truck, good. If we're hiring somebody else and we're gonna put them on the town payroll.
Well, we have a part-time.
I'll get the per diem.
Yes, we have part-time per diem calculated into the budget presently.
We just gotta find somebody to fill the position.
Well, we have somebody, we, we do have somebody that we've been using part-time throughout the summer. Whether or not this, that person would be.
You're answering my questions, Alan. So that's good. That's great. If I have the question, you're answering. I'm feeling more confident about it. You know, I wanna make sure that they, uh.
And the thing was, he wanted, the five fifty, when you get to the gross vehicle weight rating, when it's slowed it down, creeps into the New Hampshire C D L operation. That's why I wanted to stick with the three fifty, because the vehicle weight rating doesn't require the C D L. So it opens up the available applicants a lot. Like the guy that's working at the recycling center.
Certainly our full-time staff that are required to have C D L because of.
The bigger trucks. But the guy that works at the recycling center.
Roger.
He's some, like, he wanted to do stuff like this.
Any more discussion with anybody on this?
I'd feel much more comfortable if a diesel mechanic actually looked at it.
Pretty confident in the truck based stuff I've seen in it and stuff like that, and the, the price that it's coming in at and a lot of other things. It's. I mean, he went to it and drove it. It wasn't like he just kicked the tires and walked around it. He utilized the truck, drove it, managed to make a fair price on it, even more fair than what it was. There'll probably be a small fee if we're gonna stick the logo on the side, but other than that, seems ready to go. We should actually have another sander right over at the.
We do. So what we do.
The one that came off the F three fifty that we got rid of is sitting over at the recycling center, or is it back over here now? There's two.
Yeah.
We had two trucks ready to go, so we'll have still an additional sander, which is fine if one of these ones breaks, we have parts to move around, but.
Yeah, I think that's switch out the sander with another one.
Yeah.
Tim?
I'm gonna trust Steve's input, and Matt, if you looked at it, I mean, I think it's gonna save the town money in the long run. So the plan went missing, went down a truck, and then potentially save money during the wintertime as well, if we can have a part-time employee plow on those roads rather than paying contractors. Spent a lot of money on contract, and according to Steve, that was one of the bigger issues was around the town roads. We didn't have the machinery to take care, I mean, the, not the town roads.
Yeah.
Formerly private roads around the lake.
It's like all the stuff they're doing with that small excavator we have, it just allows them to, now you have one truck and move the small excavator, and then the other one could have the, and they're doing all the ditching and stuff, and they could have the other one doing sanding, and they can just kinda, or not sanding. Um, the mulching, like the chipping, just, it seems like it, they can't use the big trucks, cause their excavator sometimes has trouble putting it in, so it, hopefully they could have like two crews doing two different things, or maybe all together.
Good. Yeah.
Well, so he wants to make a motion. Go for it.
Make a motion to, uh, proceed with the purchase of the two thousand eleven Ford F three fifty in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, with the funds to come from the S B four oh one highway block grant funds.
I'll second.
All right, motion, Tim, and a second by Matt. All in favor, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
Um, moving back to, there was an email received from Blair, uh, Blair Heaney from Stratford Regional Planning Commission. They are applying on the town's behalf for the Housing Opportunity Grant Program. That's the middle deadline, I believe, is September twenty-third. Um, he has submitted a letter just requesting that you authorize someone such as myself as the authorized signer for when the application's ready to submit, since you won't be meeting until October. So I request a motion to appoint me or whomever you would like to designate as the authorized signer for that grant application.
I make a motion to appoint Alan as the au- Alan White as the authorized signer on the application for the Housing Opportunity Planning Grant Program.
And this was discussed at the planning board. Second, motion and a second, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Warren.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
All right, um, there is an email that was received from Eugene Reed, who is our public C I P member. Um, he was looking after the budget training that we did. He had some correspondence back and forth with N H M A's legal counsel. They were able to, uh, respond to him based on a question that he had posed during that training presentation, and it was follow-up questions. And they had to, um, cease communication, because the town has implemented an authorized user list with New Hampshire Municipal. So not everybody can contact them with legal questions. It should, it's been designated to the chairs of the various boards and committees. Um, so Gene is not on that list. He has requested that he be added to that list, and I had to go back and refer back to it, because it hasn't been updated since I, I think, last fall. Um, I did go through and update the appropriate people, but at the last time this was updated, I think in October of twenty-three, uh, the select board at that time authorized the position, so if it has been changed, it would be a current holder of the position. But the positions that were designated to utilize the service for the town administrator, um, all select board members, the police chief, fire chief, recreation director, building and code officer, highway director, librarian, town clerk, tax collector, treasurer, town moderator, land use clerk, planning board chair, zoning board chair, budget committee chair, conservation commission chair, supervisors of the checklist, and the trustees of the trust fund, uh, from New Hampshire Municipal Associations, um, legal overview, it says, N H M A's staff includes two attorneys who are available to answer inquiries and provide general legal assistance by email and telephone to elected and appointed officials from member towns, cities, and villages. Uh, so my question to you is, uh, number one, do you want to approve the authorized list as I've updated it with the key players in place? And the C I P committee is not on there, so do you want to extend legal services to the chair of the C I P committee, which would be John Decker as the town representative? So he's already technically on there.
Yeah, I know we, last year we added the, well, the select board is sort of in charge of the C I P, so we wouldn't really need to add him if this, the select board member is a member.
I would say we submit it as written.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can understand Mr. Reed's opinion or request, but I, I just think, knowing.
Go to the chair.
Yeah, it should go. Yeah, it should go to the Chair, just like the Budget Committee goes to the Chair if there's a request. It goes to, the Chair is the responsible person to reach out to the NHMA, and even their website.
The houses do have authorized users, user list in place. This is why they do it, so that they don't have a budget committee members logging down, delete their free legal services, asking the same question, maybe a different form. I know, I'm still audio recording. Everything's failed to involve the Westman, it's all of us. Happy Monday, Friday the 13th.
So you need us to make a motion?
Uh, yes, to approve the updated authorized users list to access NHMA's legal services.
I make a motion to approve the updated authorized users list to access NHMA's legal services dated for September 16th, 2024.
Aye, second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Matt Sherrill.
Last action item is I had correspondence and met in person with Peggy Pulsofer, who is a GOV. Peggy has researched her lineage and found that she is most likely a first or second cousin of the GOVs that are buried within the GOV family cemetery off of Raymond Road. Excuse me.
Tried to cross from White's Grove.
Correct. This cemetery is a private cemetery. It's the GOV family cemetery. It's located on Raymond Road. It has not been maintained for several years, the owner of which is unknown. It's not identified on our maps, the property that abuts it. You can clearly see that the property bounds extend around the cemetery, so it does not include, so it's not like it's, you have to access it via private property. It's accessible, it's straight from the state highway. She, she came to me because she wants to be able to go in there and do some cleaning, some raking, some brush removal. She had spoken with the Historical Society because they've done extensive research on a lot of the private cemeteries, trying to find residents, people that may still be involved to help with the upkeep of these private cemeteries, because the town has no authority until they become abandoned, which is after 20 years. So she came to me seeking permission, and I said, "I can't because it's a private cemetery." She is a family member. She is probably, she probably has more rights than most, but I did reach out to New Hampshire Municipal to find out how this should be handled, and there is a statute, RSA 289-14, where the, she can petition either the Board of Selectmen or the cemetery trustees to request permission to care for it, and if you were willing to accept the petition, she would then have to place an advertisement in a newspaper or local distribution just stating, "Hey, I want to do this in the cemetery." Anybody with any interest to the cemetery could contest it by a certain date forward. I've explained this process to her. She has a Facebook family group of GOVs across the country, pretty much nationwide, that are supporting her efforts, and she just wants to be able to go in there and clean up the cemetery without the possibility of somebody claiming that she's trespassing and being arrested for that. It's recommended through New Hampshire Municipal that she go through this process through 289-14A to petition you, because it then takes the liability away from the town. We could at least say, "Hey, you know, she came forward, said it's not being maintained. She wants to maintain it. We put out a public notice. We've allowed people the opportunity to come forward and contest it." So it, it takes us out of the, toward the end of it. I've included my email correspondence with her that goes back to, it goes back a couple of weeks, and there's some missing pieces in between. Like I said, she's spoken with both Lynn Gass and Tina Cook from the Historical Society, so I've kept that all out, but she would like to petition you to start that process and hopefully get the advertisement posted. If you are not in opposition to that, you can set additional parameters, including that she would have to get permission from the surrounding property owners if you choose how we would like to proceed, but it is a private cemetery. There are a lot of them that are left in disrepair, and if we have somebody that's willing to step forward as a family member, then...
Yeah, I mean, if we're able to do it within the confines of RSA 289-14, then, yeah. Do you need a motion to approve that?
Yes. I would need a motion for you to accept her petition, allow her to proceed forward with the advertising.
Do we have to set the date, or does she set the?
It doesn't state in the statute, but I would think that you would at least want to give, you know, two weeks of exposure for somebody to come forward and...
Sure. Somebody wants to clean up my cemetery, come on over and do it.
Hopefully, nobody would try to arrest her for criminal trespass, but...
I don't think it would be.
Because it's private land. We can't.
It's not posted.
If they're a family.
It's not, I know.
It's not posted.
It's almost...
It says that it, it said that the maintenance is responded, the responsibility of the descendants of those in her. So she is a descendant, but is a descendant defined as, you know, the daughter, granddaughter? Does it go that far? That's, that's where it's really dry, so...
She's already done a lot of work.
She has. She's done a ton of work.
Yeah.
There's a whole bunch of lawn bags out by it right now, or applied on the way here, and I've seen her out working in it.
Amazing. Woman her age doing that kind of work.
Sign away whatever we need to do. That's how I feel about it.
If you could make a motion to accept her petition, I will...
Make a motion to accept Mr. Pulsofer's petition to clean up the private cemetery at GOV's Road, GOV Family Cemetery.
Motion in a second. All in favor, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Matt Sherrill.
We already talked about Mr. Reed's correspondence, Tom Duffy's correspondence, Blair Heady's correspondence, David Moore, the Stratford Town Administrator initiated correspondence with the affected town administrators that are affected by the Exeter ALS issue, so I just forwarded that so you could be in the loop. Again, you know, they extended it until 12:20 at this point, and then more conversation will take place. Sam Demerit's recommendation for the appointment of Drew Stevens. I did issue a letter to Mabe's Mobile Cocktail Hour, which is Grindstone Foods LLC, just authorizing them to attend Nottingham Park and Rets Halloween Festival on 10/19 here. The DFG Fair Association issued a memorandum of understanding. We will be providing EMS coverage, or Nottingham Fire Rescue will be providing EMS coverage, at least two people for the fair, which is coming up next weekend.
Is it a fair and, I mean, are there two people and an ambulance, or?
I think it's just two people. It's just EMS, yeah.
And they're paying us for it.
Correct.
And we started to agree that two ambulances is what we were supplying an ambulance.
Taylor O'Hamlin. I issued her a special event license for her 5K pancreatic cancer walk and run, which will be taking place from the Highway Garage on Flota Street on October 6th, and we just talked about her. That is all I have for my report.
Anybody have any questions for Ellen? Okay, we have one item for assessing.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept the attempt to cut wood or timber for MAP 11 Lot 3 Slash 3.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Matt Sherrill.
Perfect. We went over basically, do we have any action items to talk about? Not really, but, no, we pretty much went over.
I don't have any. Should have talked to Dale about the tax deed thing if we would have thought about it, but that's just a long, longstanding thing to dig through.
About the what?
Those lists of property, the tax-deded properties, and how to proceed with getting, reduce the number of them or encompass them, however we need to, to properly utilize them or sell them or whatever.
And then we have the conversation about committees.
Yeah, Rex did an everything.
Facilities we're going to review in January, February.
And then we'll decide and we'll go for it for the committees.
All right, so I believe, uh...
So can I bring up, we have a couple things to bring up in general before we go to non-public, but... Sure. Nottingham, the Pataqueway State Park is coming Saturday, September 21st. Everybody's welcome to come. Free admission into the park. He's got on the supplier eight to 5:00 PM, but things really don't start happening until 11 o'clock. A family fun day over at Fun Day Trail. They're going to do a very short walk over on Fun Day Trail. For the kids, it'll be a animal bingo type of a game. Should be interesting. It's not going to be a long or hard walk, so come on out and join us. Followed up by, we got an ice cream truck there. We ask that, bring your own lunch. Enjoy some ice cream. We'll have some games there, play some games, cornhole and Giant Jinger. I think library's bringing some disc golf, so we can practice a little disc golf, get ready for that course to open up over at Maston. So and then at 1:30 to 3 o'clock, we'll have some toast at the lake, so come on over and join us. This Saturday, Pataqueway State Park for a fun-filled day.
Weather looks perfect, too.
It does look good.
Nice call day.
Good.
Anything else? So we're going to go into non-public?
Public comment. Arnold, at least offer a comment. Hey, Doug!
I saw the ad in the New Hampshire Municipal Association website for the Request Proposal for Legal Services. That'll be advertising for sure, because I happened to look up, other towns are going through the same process right now, and we only got two people, two firms to bid earlier this year.
Yeah. So it's on the town website, it's on New Hampshire Municipal, and then I have a distribution list of people that have requested to be on it from past requests for proposals, but other than that, we'll see what we get.
Anything else, Doug?
No.
All right, I will make a motion to move into non-public for RSA 91-A:32B and C.
A second.
Before we go into non-public, once we adjourn non-public, we will be adjourning the meeting and closing. We need a roll call vote to go into non-public. Steve?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim DeBrio.
Aye, Matt Sherrill.